City Clerk, can I get a roll call?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Daniel Damian.
So I will make a motion to excuse Councilmember Daniel Damian. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? No. City Clerk, please continue.
Thank you. Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez. Mayor Protem Alejandra Avila.
Here.
And Mayor Emmanuel Estrada.
Here. Thank you for that, City Clerk. City Clerk, is there anybody looking to make a public communication?
No.
If not, I will open up public communication, seeing that nobody is looking to speak. I now move to close public communication. And we are ready for our presentation by Director of Finance, Rose Tam.
Good evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'm here tonight to present you the American Rescue Plan Act, ARP for short, which was signed into law by the President on March 2021. The ARP established the Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund and for the Local Physical Recovery Fund to provide support to state, local, and tribal governments in responding to the impact of COVID-19 and in their effort to contain COVID-19 on the communities, residents, and businesses. With the Mayor and City Council's direction, the CEO and Directors have come together and worked on and provide a list of proposed projects and programs that will assist the community and benefit the community and residents and local business. Also, and help some of the city's operational need. And as you may see, this slide shows you the allocation of the ARP. For your information, the city was allocated of 22.9 million. And the funding period is from March 2021 to 2024. Therefore, we have about four years to spend this fund. The first allocation was received in the amount of 11.46 million on July 1st, 2021. We estimated that the remaining balance, which the other half of the fund will be received around July 1st, 2022. And in this presentation, we plan to set aside 50% or half of the funding, which is about 11.46 million, for any programs and projects that will assist the community and residents and businesses. And we also provide a list of the program projects that also will benefit the community and also will improve the city's operation. And... Do you have any question at this point? And if no, I can go to the next slide to provide you the opportunity.
Mr. Mayor, by? Thank you. Rose, on the first slide here.
Yes.
The numbers allocated here for estimated costs, are these operating costs that... Excuse me, are these expenses that we occurred during... Well, we're still in it, but from last March up until now?
Actually, the costs provided here are estimate costs for the projects that the city is going to incur. They are estimated costs. And the list of detailed projects was provided to you on the third page.
Okay, no problem. Thank you, sorry if I missed that.
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, I am not so sure if you can see this on the slide. And I also prepared a list of the programs that directly benefit the community. And I provide lots of space there for give the opportunity for City Council to add any programs and projects that you may have. However, since we have four years to spend these grants and you don't have to provide all the program or projects by tonight, and you can always come back and add any programs you may have later on. However, we have to provide a report to the state and the federal to let them know the potential projects that the city is going to do by the end of August. So, looks like it's kind of small, but you have a hard copy here. And we already have some lists here from City Council's input, such as assistance for residential utility or business assistance, rental assistance, legal services related to COVID eviction and rent increases, free specialty classes for residents, and free excursion for young... I mean, for youth, teen, family, and senior to pay for registration fee. Fully funded food collaborative program to address food insecurity, and also free senior programs, activities, events, and other programs. And also, we can assist crisis response team. For example, Team for Homeless Outreach Response, replacement commercial gray refrigerators at five senior center and programs like that. And City Council may add any more programs to this list. And as I mentioned, we set aside about 50% to assist the community. Any input from City Council or questions? As I mentioned, you don't have to provide all the programs by tonight. You can always email or add the program later on. And we will bring back the list on the August 4th meeting.
Rose, I have a question.
Yes.
So let's say, these are proposed programs. Let's say we adopt a list, and it's provided to the state and federal government, as you mentioned.
Yes.
Is there flexibility in that? Or are we committed to that line item as it is provided to the state and federal government?
It will be a proposed list, and we can always revise it. It's just we do that as a placeholder. As long as the program we are going to do later to meet the requirement, as I have mentioned, and they have four categories. And the first one, any program that relate to public health emergency or to reverse the negative economic impact or to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19. And the third category is to provide government services extend to reduction in revenue due to COVID impact. And this category is just like lost revenue, and it can be used similar like we use general fund. And the fourth category is to make necessary investment in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. As long as the city are doing program to fit these four categories, then we are qualified to spend the fund from the ARP. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Rose, can you... or staff, can you guys and gals just provide a little bit of more clarity under what business assistance looks like? Just the framework of what that might be under that line item?
Business assistance. For example, I believe last year, the City Council has provides similar program, like give $5,000 to the business to assist them with the utility bill.
Understood. And please tell me if this is something that's at least eligible under the parameters. One of the things that we have certainly noticed, at least I have, speaking with the small businesses here in Baldwin Park, is they don't necessarily have the tools to build the capacity within the organization. As you know, many of the organizations here in Baldwin Park have two to three, you know, what I'll consider small mom-and-pop operations. And they suffered. As they did, they, you know, essentially laid off or, you know, put their full-time staff on part-time staff, right? And, you know, the owners themselves just continue to do the work. This seems like an opportunity where we can perhaps hire a consultant, you know, for an RFP process, where they can come in and work with a selected number of small businesses that have the potential, or more importantly, are willing to go through a program that we create that allows them to expand their business and become more compatible, you know, with what they're trying to do. And I see that in a couple of things. One is they grow their business, which then equals, you know, additional revenue for them, but also additional sales tax and so forth for the city, for us, Baldwin Park. And what it also does is it creates jobs here in our city. You know, these, you know, one or two or three jobs per se. So if we have, say, 20 businesses that we're able to help expand or provide them the tools for them to grow, whether we're working with our Chamber of Commerce Business Association or not, that's, you know, those are job creations that we're able to do. So if we can look at something like that, to be able to host, you know, it's one thing to, you know, and I support, you know, giving them the grants as we did last time. But I think we also have to support them for the long term, to provide them the tools necessary to do that. And I don't necessarily see that we either have someone that does that now on a consistent basis. I know Ben and his staff does that, you know, as it comes along. But for us to actually really galvanize this opportunity to do that would be helpful. So if we can do that, the other item also...
Yes, this would be qualified. The City Council can direct staff to set some fund aside.
Again, that conversation is, you know, I want to make sure that the rest of the council feels comfortable with that. But that's something at least to put on the item of discussions. You know, like you said, not today, but for later. And then in regards to Crisis Response Team, is it related strictly to homeless? Or what else are we looking underneath that item right now?
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. The intent was primarily for homeless, rather than sending out a police officer. We could send out other folks that are a little bit more specifically trained with mental health and things of that nature.
Good, no, that's great. Just be aware, that's going to require full-time staff or staffers to be on-call to some degree.
Yes.
And I don't necessarily see that as a one-time deal. That's an ongoing issue, which is good. Perfect. And then the other, there was something here where I saw assistance to residents for utilities and water. Or was that? Maybe I missed it.
This could be any type of utilities, such as water or electricity or something related to waste management.
No, that's fantastic. Just be aware that, as you know, through the state, there's also an opportunity where the water districts or individuals that are behind on their water bills or utility bills, they may be offered, you know, a grant of some sort. So that might just pull away from, you know, we may have to reallocate. But it's good that we do it here. The one other thing too is I don't see anything here for job development for youth. So if we can look at, you know, really building out our youth employment opportunities using some of this money, that would be great. Because I know, you know, we always have wrecking parks and so forth. But if there's a way in which, you know, we were kind of doing this early on before this whole pandemic part. But now, if there's a way in which we could do the hiring for, you know, young individuals for, you know, less than 20 hours, high school, or whatever the case might be, where we can then place them in some of the local businesses that we, you know, that we pre-approve, that's a location for them. You know, we can have close to, you know, 300 or 500 kids through this process. For less than $1 million, we could have several thousand, several thousand of our youth be placed in several locations as their first-time employment program. School district supports, I think they would support this. They don't do this, but it's something that, you know, if we're going to take the opportunity to help our community, then, you know, our youth is a grand opportunity and target to provide them their first opportunity, first job. We could put some criteria around that for, you know, where they work, job development, skills development. So when they are finished with this one, you know, for this job, this part-time job that we establish them, they are then set up for success moving forward onto another job, or whether they're going to college or not. But at least gives them a leg up to be able to move forward. And more importantly, under, you know, under our wing, per se, of mentoring and development of youth. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Protem.
Rose, I have a question. I know you said, we are, as a council, we're still going to work on this list and iron out exactly what we would like. And you also said that it could be, it could be, we can add more things to it or take away and just send the new report. On the Crisis Response Team, I really like that homeless example that you put. But we can also, on that section, incorporate like a social worker to go out with the police department to respond to certain calls, maybe? Like domestic abuse calls, child abuse? Because I know a lot of times, it's our police officers. And if we were to have a social worker that specifically focuses in those areas, I think it would be helpful for our department, our police officers, and most importantly, to the families that they're dealing well with. So I would like to see that. But as a team, as a group, we can sit and brainstorm so we can come up with a detailed list of what we would like to see under those sections.
Yes.
Thank you. That's it for now. I'm still looking at it, but we can, we still have time to.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have four years to spend this funding. Yes, as long as the program meets the criteria. Yes.
So I wanted to, I kind of want to put emphasis on the Crisis Response Team. I think this is a, I think it's something that we should consider. And like Mayor Protem said, not just for the homeless, but also for our, you know, for our residents. As I mentioned, when I went on that ride-along, a big portion of those calls were mental health-related. So I think it would, I think there's a big chance to help our residents and help our police department at the same time save resources. And then I did read through the final interim rule of the ARP. And I think that there's a lot of opportunity to offer programs and services to the city that otherwise wouldn't, it wouldn't be possible to do so. You know, I've been kind of looking at how we can better infrastructure, but at the same time, bettering the quality of life for our residents. And I think one of the, one of the ideas that I had was looking to work with our water, the local water companies and potentially do, help residents gain a water sense EPA labels and certified toilets and showerheads to reduce our water consumption, especially now that we're in a drought. And then we can potentially hire local labor, which is another thing that the ARP emphasis on, to help install those, right? Because if we don't, we risk handing out these tools and them not getting used. So I think that, you know, I'd hope the council would support that. I think it's a great way to protect our water, help with infrastructure, and help our residents at the same time. And then I know that we've been talking about programs regarding parks and recreation. So I know that there's funding, I think there's funding here for one year. So I want to make sure that we can try to allocate funding for the next four years. And also consider childcare, which I believe was also mentioned in the ARP interim, final interim rule, helping our residents try to find, you know, try to find funds for childcare. As we know, childcare is one of the most expensive things that set our community back. But we can either work with our school district, who has a really good childcare program, and they, I think they figured it out. They're very good at setting requirements to get that, that type of help. Either you're working, or you're going to school, or you're looking for work. But you need to be, you need to have a valid reason to have that subsidy. So I think there's an opportunity there as well.
Mayor, another thing. Where would we be able to add veteran services under this? Would it also be, not necessarily crisis response, but maybe some type of veteran services, resources, where they can get whatever services they may need? I know they have to travel far to obtain these kinds of services. But maybe if we can look into that, that maybe we can provide them at the park menu? I don't know, we would have a facility where we can house veteran services there for them? Or somewhere in our city?
Yeah, we would need to identify a location, Councilmember, or Mayor Protem. Thank you.
Just another idea to look into.
I think that's a great idea. I think, you know, we do need to offer services for our veterans. And I think there might be a possibility to find potential partners on, at the mental health walk. I know that there will be a lot of veteran-focused organizations there. So maybe we can get better information then.
Rose, I have a question for you. On the community assistance, there's a lot of to be determined by the council for the amounts, the estimated cost.
Yes.
But what, so I know that when you look at the other proposed programs and projects, there's a, there's an amount that is attached to it, at least roughly, probably, right, an estimation? So I didn't tally up and then subtract it. Do you know what the fund looks like for the community assistance allocation?
That's the list. The, those lists are already on here. It was based on City Council's idea. So we put those lists there as a placeholder. As you come up with more lists here, and we will get the City Council's direction and let staff know how much you would like to set aside for each program on this list and plus the additional programs that you are going to add to this list. We will get the direction from City Council, how much funding that they want to put on or allocate to each program on the list. That's why we put "to be determined" at this point.
Okay, let me ask it in a different way then. For the other proposed programs and projects, how much does that total?
The total is 50% of the ARP. We set aside 50% to fund the programs or projects that directly benefit the community.
Okay. So about half of the ARP is going towards the city, and then half is going to the community assistance?
Yes.
Okay.
And even though it says half going to city, however, lots of programs or projects that the city is going to do, is going to benefit the community and the business as well. I give one small example. We are going to install an online credit card payment software program, which will cost probably under $30,000. So this will make it easy for the business owners who is going to, who are going to do business in the city. Most of them, they have asked and inquire, "Oh, can we pay online?" So that will benefit the local business also.
Okay.
I just give one of the examples. And the chief or Manny or Ben can, or Sam can give some of the example or the projects that they propose to do on the list. And I think chief will have a couple of good examples that they want to do, and such as the body camera and replace the old taser gun, things like that, which will benefit the community and increase the safety of the city.
Okay, thank you, Rose. And I was really glad to see at least a placeholder, like you said, for the rental assistance, the fully funded food collaborative program to address food insecurity, and rental assistance, business assistance, the utility assistance. Because I think something that we want to think about is in the next couple of months, probably, there will be a lot of individuals, either renters or property owners, who are no longer protected, you know, by the moratoriums that are in place, right, for eviction and so forth.
Yes.
And so that's something that we're going to want to think through as to how do we assist
Right.
families in our community that are dealing with some very serious hardships.
Yes.
So this is great. I'm so glad, this is very timely.
Yes.
Because I'm sure that there will be a wave, perhaps even as early as August, September.
Yes. That's why we put it on the list as a top priority. And the City Council can direct staff to set aside certain amount of funding. But we can always alter or change the amount on a as-needed basis, based on the available funding that the city received.
And that's, and so that's why I asked how much is being allocated to each category? Because if this funding is going to be provided to us like in two phases
Yes.
over the next three and a half years.
Right.
We'll also want to take that into consideration as far as the timing of the items on this list.
Yes.
Right? So that some of these other proposed programs and projects, they might, they might be fulfilled on the second phase
Yes.
of this funding.
Yes.
And some of the more pressing items, like we were talking about rental assistance and utility assistance and things like that.
Yes.
Obviously, in the front end. So good. And what about, early on in the pandemic, there was a cost, a significant cost to us for the testing site?
Right.
Is that being reimbursed here?
That's not part of here. We have other funding. We, some of them, we can get reimbursement from FEMA. We are working on that.
Oh, good. Oh, great. So that would be separate from this?
Yes.
We're good.
This funding... This funding, you can use on the new proposed programs.
Very nice. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Then one more thing. I think it'd be a really good idea if we, if we set up a time and date, have a public town hall so that we can have community input as well and hear out, you know, what they think they might need about the next four years.
Yes.
And that goes, that pigges back onto the item that we talked about a few, about a month ago or so. When we were going, I'm not sure if Enrique was here at the time or not, but we were going to ask input from the community in regards to that through a survey or a QR code or whatever the case might be. It was related to the budget process, but we wanted to do it just more of that example of seeking the input from the community as to, you know, what, what they believe are the actual needs, you know, in their lives. So. Yeah, it sounds like we're good.
Pardon me. So with the city council's direction, and I can come back with the staff report and put the list of the proposed program and projects that we already have the estimate cost. And I can put the half of the funding, the 11.4 million, under the community assistance category. So the city council can always come up with ideas and programs and dollar amount. And we can, as we go along, then we can always add that to that. And at least we put a placeholder there for half of the ARP funding under the category for the community assistance.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, a second question?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Rose. I really appreciate that recommendation. My thoughts would be is to hold off on that until we understand the cost of, and more importantly, the other programs that we're looking at.
Yes.
Because then at that time, we have a full understanding of what all of our wish lists items cost, right?
Yes.
If we're over 12 million or 15 million, we may then look at the, you know, the city programs, the ones that are listed here.
Right.
And reconsider those and eliminate them to move the funding into the other one.
Yes.
Unless, by what you're asking to do, does that prevent us from doing that later or no?
And we can put something under each category as a placeholder or some program. And we can come back to the second meeting in August as long as we have some programs or something put it on the placeholder. So we can provide the first draft report by the end of August and inform the federal how we are going to spend this money. But it's not a fixed thing. As long as the programs that you are going to do fit the category, then we will be okay.
If, if, oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Along both your lines of thinking, I think for general direction for us, the numbers that we have proposed at 50/50 right now would be great as a general direction. And so that, let's say, for the report that has to go to the, to the federal government by the end of August, it gives us at least a marker. And then for the public input type of thing, if we were to be asked for some sort of general idea of how much money might there be available for the community-type projects, then we would provide that as a number, as a general guidance. So if you would be comfortable with those numbers only being general in direction, but at least some direction, then that we would be careful to only utilize them for that purpose.
I'm perfectly comfortable with that. Thank you for that.
I think that makes sense. One more thing I forgot. You know, we also talk about broadband and the ARP. You know, setting up in a broadband structure would be, you know, impossible with the funds that we have. But I think at the very least, we should consider increasing Wi-Fi access at city facilities so that, you know, students and then potential, you know, students and anybody else who might need that resource can have a point of access to that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so I think we've, we've agreed to the general direction. I think we've all given some ideas and potential input into these plans. So Rose, is there anything else?
That's all at this time.
All right.
We can always receive a proposed idea or direction from the city council via email and or through CEO. Then we can always update or revise the list as we go. Thank you again for everybody's time.
Yes, yes. Yeah, thank you, Rose, and of course staff for, you know, taking the time to set this all up for us. So at this moment, we're done with our presentation. So I believe we will recess to closed session.
Thank you.